Good evening, members, ladies and gentlemen in the public gallery. Before we start the meeting, just make a quick announcement on a previous thing because we don't have any other business in the permitted planning agenda. But just recently, Undershaw got the High Court's approval and in paragraph sixty-two and sixty-three, I'd just like to mention what the judgment said. In my view, the officer's report drew all the relevant factors on this issue to the Committed's attention, and the Committed was amply justified in proceeding on the basis that single residential use was not a viable option, however optimum it might be in theory. At all events, I'm unable to see that the Committed's approach was in any way invalidated by a failure to identify a single residence use as a viable option for preserving the heritage asset. Secondly, I do not consider the Committed's decision was undermined by what I take with the claimant's contention that it failed to have regard to a viable educational use that was less harmful to the heritage asset than the proposal in the application before it. So, you know, I'd just really like to thank the officers and the legal team for a very successful outcome in the Undershaw case. We still await news of costs and other things, but that's a rather good bit of news for this Committed's previous work. So, thank you all for that. And with that, let's get on with the planning meeting. Draw your attention to the fire regulations that are on the screens behind us. We have no intention of having a practice fire alarm tonight, so if the alarm goes, it's for real, please leave the building as quickly as possible. And can I ask everyone, please, to make sure their mobile phones are switched off or silent? Let's move on to the main business, if we may. Minutes of the previous meeting took place on the twenty-fifth of November twenty fifteen, have been on the table for the last thirty minutes. Are you content I assign them as a true record? Counselor Mulliner.
No, I'm not, because I was in fact present, but would like my name to be added to the list of those present rather than giving apologies.
That will be added, thank you very much indeed. But other than that, may I assign them as a correct record with the amendment? Thank you very much indeed. Emma, apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chairman. We have apologies from Councillors Bryan Adams and Simon Inchbold. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Declaration of interest, members. Counselor Piper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a member of Hazelmead Town Council's Planning Committee, I have an interest there.
Thank you very much indeed. Counselor Hall.
Likewise, Mr. Chairman.
Edwidge Round. Thank you very much indeed. That's all noted. And have there been any questions from members of the public, Emma?
Number six, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth, relevant updates, the government guidance or legislation since the last meeting?
Thank you, Chairman. There haven't been any new pieces of legislation to update you or members, but the Chairman has asked me to use this item to highlight the provisions that have been legislated for in the last couple of years in respect of permitted development for changes of use. Since two thousand and thirteen, as part of the growth agenda and measures to simplify the planning system, the government has introduced new legislation in different stages to allow changes of use as permitted development. These essentially give permitted development rights to convert buildings to dwellings, and this is one part of the wide range of measures to support an uplift in housing delivery. Some of the changes are subject to the need to gain what's known as prior approval of the local planning authority, but in all cases, the key point is that the changes of use are deemed to be granted as permitted development. And the council cannot realistically object to the principle, only check compliance against the technical criteria. The main changes, and I do summarise these, involve changes from offices to residential, shops of various types and classes to residential, storage and distribution, class B eight to residential, and agriculture to residential. And it's also possible to change from agriculture to a flexible use of class A one retail, class A two financial and professional services, A three restaurants and cafes, B one offices, B eight storage and distribution, C two, sorry, C one hotel, and D two assembly and leisure. Where prior approval is required, applicants need to apply to the council for approval of the technical details, and these tend to be in relation to highways, noise, contamination and flooding. There are some restrictions on floor area and also in areas of constraint such as conservation areas and area about natural beauty. Members will see the prefix P R A or C R generally on the weekly list flagging these are this type of application. Critically, there is a fixed timescale for determination after which there is a default approval. Rather like applications for certificates of lawfulness, these are not committee or calling items in the scheme of delegation as the assessments are technical and there is no policy application or member judgments to be applied. These have effectively been predetermined by the government by the making of these changes permitted development. The rigid timescales in any event do require speedy determination that do not fit in easily with committee timescales. In terms of metrics, which the Chairman asked me also to address, since two thousand and thirteen, we have received some hundred and eight applications in the borough for office to residential change, and we've effectively granted sixty-four of those. And in terms of all other new-style prior approval applications in the last two years, we've received forty-seven applications and granted twenty-three. I hope that's helpful, Chairman. I realise that's a lot of information to read out, but I'm very happy to take any questions or provide a more detailed note for members if you would find that helpful, so you can read it more slowly in due course. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. There is a question coming, but I might just add that off-street parking is not a requirement under this legislation. We have had officers turned into accommodation units without any off-road parking. It is a problem. Counselor Mulliner.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, question. You referred to agriculture. I had visions of farms being turned into housing estates without any planning permission. Do you actually mean agricultural buildings?
Yes, absolutely. To clarify, I was talking about the change of use of buildings in all cases. Yes, thank you for that clarification.
No further questions. I think we will move on. In the event of any site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, they'll be held on Tuesday, the second of February twenty sixteen, at a time to be agreed. Let's move on to the planning applications. The first A item is for public speaking, land at Merchant's Hill, Tilford Road, Hindhead. Members, you'll see that the update sheet, the revised recommendation and this application to be deferred. I'll pass you over to Louise for an update, but other than that, we'll go straight to the recommendation. Louise?
Thank you, Chairman. Some of the proposed highways works that were proposed as part of this application, we sought via amendments during the course of the application. Some of these highways works are not on public highways land and are within the control of the applicants. As a result, they need to be included within the red line of the application, which they have not been done so. As a result, we're therefore proposing to defer the application. This will enable the applicant to submit an amended site location plan to include all of the land which proposed highways works are due to take place and enable us to, a reconsultation, to take place, and then will be brought back to committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Therefore, I recommend that this item is deferred until our next meeting. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much indeed. Item A two, WA twenty fifteen, one nine five seven, erection of a dwelling at land adjacent to number thirty-one Hill Road, Hazelmead. Louise, again, yours to introduce.
Thank you, Chairman. The site is located on the southwestern side of Hill Road. The site originally formed part of the garden area of thirty-one Hill Road, which is the adjacent property here, but has since been subdivided and fenced off. There is a detached outbuilding in the eastern corner of the site. The slight slopes downwards to the west and south. The surrounding area is residential in character, and the building here to the south of the site is a listed building. These top two photographs are taken from the street scene in Hill Road. This first one here is looking west towards thirty-one Hill Road, and this second one is looking southeast towards the access to twenty-nine Hill Road, which is just beyond this tree here. This final photograph at the bottom is taken from within the site, looking towards the Hill Road street. You can see the detached outbuilding which exists in the eastern corner of the site here. This first photograph is taken from within the site, looking towards twenty-nine Hill Road, which is positioned to the rear. And this second photograph is taken from within the access of twenty-nine Hill Road. The site boundary is here, on the right-hand side of the picture. The proposed dwelling would be set back into the site towards the southwestern corner with areas of amenity space to the rear and side. The dwelling has been positioned to relate to the listed building, which is here to the rear, rather than to the road, and has been designed to appear as a lodge or accommodation for staff being positioned towards the front of the building, front of the site, sorry. The positioning of the building would draw attention to the listed building when viewed from the Hill Road street scene. Vehicular access would be positioned off of Hill Road with parking in front of the dwelling, and the existing outbuilding would be demolished as part of the proposal. The building would have a width of nine point six metres, a depth of seven point six metres, and a height of six point eight metres. The building would be rendered with tile hanging above the windows, plain clay tiles and white painted joinery. Two small dormer windows would be positioned in the front roof slope. The building picks up on features in the listed buildings to the rear, such as the flat roof dormers and the gable features. The dwelling would have a living room, study and kitchen at ground floor, and two bedrooms and two bathrooms at first floor. This plan shows the street scene elevation from Hill Road with the listed buildings here and the adjoining property at thirty-one Hill Road here and the proposed cottage in the middle. This is a CGI image which shows an image of the proposal. This is a comparison of two previous applications which have been refused by committee and dismissed at appeal and the current proposal. As you can see, the size of the building has been reduced, and the building has been repositioned towards this corner of the site. This slide shows a comparison between the current scheme and the previously refused schemes in terms of the street scene elevation. The current scheme here at the bottom. This table shows the main differences between the dismissed appeal schemes and the current proposal. As you can see from the table, the footprint, floor area, height and depth of the building have been reduced from both the appeal schemes. The width has been reduced from the two thousand and twelve appeal scheme but has slightly been increased from the two thousand and thirteen application. There has also been a previous application approved for a new vehicular access off Hill Road in the centre of the site similar to the position where it is currently proposed and for a garage in the site here. This has currently not been implemented. In conclusion, the site would provide a new dwelling in the developed area of Hazelmead. The proposal is considered to preserve the setting of the adjacent listed building and would have an acceptable visual appearance. The proposal would have an acceptable impact on adjoining occupiers and on the surrounding highway network. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of the development, the housing land supply, the impact on the highway, the effect on the SPAs, and the matters for members' judgment this evening are the impact on visual amenity, the impact on the setting of the adjacent listed building, the impact on trees, the impact on residential amenity, and the standard of accommodation and provision of amenity space. Can I also provide an update to members to amend the description to include the demolition of the existing outbuilding? Thank you, Chairman, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Louise. And this item is under public speaking. I understand the procedure has been explained, so can I introduce the objector, Mr. Richard Akers? You have four minutes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, I'm Richard Akers, I'm neighbour and a chancellor's surveyor. Now, there are two key issues, adverse impact on the setting of the listed building and impact on the character and appearance of the area. And these were the issues which led to the dismissal of two appeals on this land in two thousand and fourteen, which is the most material consideration in the determination of this proposal. So firstly, the setting of the listed building. The situation is very simple in my view. This land sits right in front of a listed building, and if you had an application for a new house in the front garden of a listed building, sixteen metres from its frontage, whether or not it's to one side of its central axis, I think it would be refused outright. In planning terms, there is no reason why this application should be treated differently. A brief comment on design, although it was not a reason for refusal of the last schemes, I think it should be here. I don't think we should allow this kind of cynical pastiche. It isn't a gardener's cottage, and it shouldn't pretend to be one, and this lack of integrity exacerbates the adverse impact. Secondly, then, the character and appearance of the area. Page sixty-six of the committee report, it quotes the inspector who said, "The dwelling would appear incongruously cramped and out of scale and keeping in this context", but it doesn't go on to explain what that context is. And the context the inspector is referring to is in paragraphs fifteen and sixteen of his decision letter, which I'll read now. "In the immediate vicinity of the appeal site, there are several notable buildings. Apart from numbers twenty-nine, twenty-nine A, to which reference is made above, Broad Dean is an imposing house and another listed building, grade two star. Roughly opposite the appeal site is Hammacoom, another building of individual character in a substantial plot. The pair of semi-detached houses, numbers thirty-one and thirty-three, is a recent addition to the street scene, but as a single substantial building with traditional design features, in my judgment, it accords with the general character of the area. Aside from the quality and variety of building designs, the spacing between buildings is mostly quite generous and a feature which I consider reinforces the character of the area and enhances appreciation of the quality of the individual properties. Thus, the context of the appeal site is that it is largely surrounded by buildings of considerable presence and character in a generally spacious setting." So, in this context, it seems clear that as a small building squeezed in between buildings of considerable presence, this new proposal would also be out of scale and keeping. In fact, reading his decision letter objectively, there is absolutely nothing in it which gives any indication that this revised proposal would have been acceptable to him on this issue. Now, the developers worked with the planning officers to try and find an acceptable way of developing this land, but whatever it has been made to look like, it is not a development site. This land has already been developed. It is the open space, the amenity space, in fact, the garden for numbers thirty-one and thirty-three Hill Road. And in that planning permission, this committee removed permitted development rights by condition over the whole of this subject site in order to protect it from further development. This committee has consistently, over a ten-year period, resisted overdevelopment of this site. The council's planning policies have been consistently applied, and you've been consistently supported by the planning inspectorate. We urge you to remain consistent and refuse this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Akers. There are no speakers in support, so, members, I open it up to you. Counselor Mulliner.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I was actually slightly puzzled by the omission from the otherwise excellent report from Louise Yandle and indeed from the matters for Committed's judgment of the character and appearance of the surrounding residential area. I was wondering whether this was an accidental omission or whether something's changed and it's no longer something we can opine on.
The impact on visual amenity is covering that issue, so that is a matter of your judgment this evening.
Thank you. I listened with interest to what Mr. Akers had to say, and I agree, if you look at both the two appeal appeals that have been heard, both inspectors say there are two main issues, the setting of the listed building at twenty-nine, twenty-nine A, and the character and appearance of the surrounding residential area. I did actually agree with him regarding the setting point. I think the applicant should be commended for making an attempt to meet the inspector's concerns about this, and I see nothing wrong with creating buildings which attempt to look like buildings similar to them. In fact, it's something which was committed, and the whole tend to applaud. However, I think that even if it succeeds there, the big problem is the nature of the site and the overriding spaciousness, which is the character of it. Could we go back to the aerial photo for a moment? Right. If you stand on the road, what you notice, and it's made clear here, is that the gap between the two houses on the opposite side of the road is no less, in fact, slightly larger than the gap between twenty-nine and twenty-nine A and thirty-one, thirty-one A. And this is hardly surprising when you remember that the building that occupies twenty-nine, twenty-nine A was a house which basically mirrored the other three and had a large garden to go with it. And so while I can sympathise with the applicant's wish to try and maximise the value to him of the overall site, I think it's always fallen over on the point that if you do put a building of any size in the gap, you get a very cramped appearance. And if we could go to the elevation diagram... I'm sorry, can we just carry on for a sec? Right, I mean, if you look at that, I think that gets a slightly more flattering appearance. And if you go back to the block diagram about four earlier, yes, what you can see is that there's a bit of space between the proposed development and twenty-nine, twenty-nine A, but precious little between it and thirty-one, thirty-one A. So I can't help feeling that the word cramped is going to be used again and again. And so, while I do sincerely applaud what the applicant has tried to do, and I don't hold it against him at all, I'm afraid I'm unable to agree with the officer, subject to what my colleagues have to say. And I do think that if we refuse this application, it would be extremely surprising if a third inspector took a different view from the other two. Yes, it's a bit smaller, but it's a substantial building in its own right, and if you pass it in the street, you will see what looks like a shoehorned addition, which contrasts sharply with the distance between the houses on the other side of the road. So I say for that reason, I'm unable on this occasion to agree with the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, Counselor Mulliner. Counselor Coburn.
Yes, sorry, I was waiting for everybody else to weigh in, but I feel very much the same way as Counselor Mulliner on this one. And Elizabeth will remember, when garden land was taken out of PDL, she had a series of meetings with me, very kindly agreed to meet me, because I felt that Waverley was not building into its policies enough protection for the garden areas where gardens form part of the character of the area. And Elizabeth probably won't remember this, but she gave me a very good set of words, which is currently in the Farnham Design Statement, which says that we should be able to protect garden land where it does form to do just that, where it forms part of the character of the area. And instantly, when I saw this application and looked at the implications and knowing the area quite well, that was exactly what came to mind to me, that, you know, what we have here are large gardens which form part of the character of the area. They're not just large green spaces waiting to be built on. There are gardens which are suitable for some form of development, and I understood why Waverley didn't want to go down the line of dismissing all development in garden land. But, you know, the character of the area is so key. We have four very different settlements. Hazelmead has its own distinct settlement, its character, and that is what I think all residents are keen to maintain while they're still accepting the need for some development. So I'm afraid I'm with Counselor Mulliner on this one. I think it will detract from the loosely contrived development that is on-site and will be cramped in the context of the surrounding properties.
Thank you, Counselor Coburn. Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. Happy New Year to you all. I agree with Counselor Muller on this one, however, I would add that it's not currently a garden. This actual site goes back a long way, and there was a protected tree which would have prevented any sort of development on this land, but it sort of disappeared somewhere along the line. And everything that Counselor Muller has said is absolutely correct. The applicant has gone some way to address some of the concerns that I have had previously. However, the setting is the setting, and we knew that these applications would be coming along when they cited the two semi-detached houses where they built those some time ago. And it still hasn't addressed the need to ensure that the setting is not affected. And I agree with Counselor Muller. Thank you.
Counselor Round.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm in a quandary, because I went there this afternoon, and it's a pretty ugly site. It's clearly been fenced off for some while and allowed to become ugly. There's nothing there. The building referred to that will be demolished is a garden shed or similar to that. It occurs to me that the connection we've dwelled on with the listed building is perhaps inappropriate, because a long time ago, it lost that part of the land as part of its curtschage when the original houses built where thirty-one and thirty-one A are. And frankly, it was when that house was demolished and replaced by rather unattractive two semi-detached buildings now that it should have been appreciated that we were laying ourselves open to an application to develop what was their garden. I don't know what would happen to this land if we refused permission. I suspect it would go on looking pretty ugly. I confess, I'm not sure what I am going to vote. Am I allowed to ask what would happen if we refused permission? Which is, of course, up to the owner. Anyway, that's it.
We'll come to that in just one moment, but dereliction is not a reason for planning, I think one can say quite clearly. Counselor Edwards.
Just coming back to the two semi-detached houses, there was a ransom strip along the right-hand edge of that bill, those two semi-detached houses, which was in the ownership of a third party and was sold about seven years ago, eight years ago. But we heard it at this council, so it's not all down to one ownership issue. Thank you.
Well, I just have a quick word myself. Just looking at the Hazelmead Design Statement, which is something we haven't really mentioned, with a grade two listed building, a grade two star listed building as well in the area, it doesn't... This building is, to me, out of scale, it's out of keeping, it's cramped, and it doesn't fit in with that part of Hazelmead, which is what the Hazelmead Design Statement is set to protect. So those are my thoughts personally. Counselor Coburn would like to know the word.
I just wanted to clarify my use of the word garden. I'm agreeing with the speaker. I don't mean by garden anything necessarily cultural. I mean the space around buildings, which obviously has an ownership, but it's the spacing that I think determines the character. And...
And that's what I was making the point about. If it's... I know what it looks like at the moment, but it's the spacing, and therefore it's the principle of building in between and making those spaces overdeveloped, that's the point I was trying to make.
Thank you, members. If there are any last questions? No. Let's move to the recommendation. Recommendation, subject conditions one to fourteen and informatives one to ten set out on pages seventy five to eighty two of the agenda, permission be granted. May have those in favour of the recommendation to grant, please show.
That's number?
And those against?
That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Abstentions? Thank you. Therefore, the recommendation to grant is lost. Can I have the alternative recommendation, please? Councillor Mulliner.
Thank you, Chairman. The application be refused because of the impact on the... the adverse impact on the setting of the listed building and on the character of the surrounding residential area, effectively repeating the issues and reasons given by both inspectors.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Edwards, thank you. Please, Elizabeth.
Chairman, if I could just come back on the proposed reason for refusal, there was a lot of discussion about the perceived harm, and I had understood most of members' concern was about the loss of open character and the impact on the prevailing character of the street scene. Councillor Muller suggested that you refer back to the impact on the setting of the listed building, which of course ultimately is your judgement, but I would remind you that the application's been looked at very carefully by your expert opinion, the Historic Buildings Officer, and has come to the conclusion as set out in the report that this particular amended form of development would now no longer affect the setting of the listed building. So my personal recommendation to you that it would be advisable, you can accept his expert opinion to rely on your concerns about the loss of open character in the street scene and how it's more crowded and cramped, rather than reverting back to impact on the historic building as such. Thank you, Chairman. In which case, Chairman, we've probably got some amended wording or supportive wording to clarify what councillor Muller has suggested, if I could perhaps read that out. The proposal, by virtue of its size and juxtaposition with neighbouring properties, would result in a loss of open character and a cramped appearance, which would be harmful to the appearance of the street scene and visual amenity of the area, contrary to policies D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002, paragraph seventeen of the NPPF and the Hazlemere Design Statement 2012, I think the date right on that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Councillor Muller.
Happy to propose that much more elegant form of words.
Yes, Councillor Edwards. Right, can we... So no further comments, move to the vote, that the application is refused on the grounds that we have just heard. Those in favour of refusal, please show.
That's eight.
Against? Abstentions?
One.
Thank you. Move on to the non-public speaking items. Item B1, WA2015 of Bleak 2092, erection of detached outbuilding following demolition of the existing detached outbuilding at Field House 8 Park Road, Hazlemere. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. The site lies to the south of Park Road and is accessed from the main highway by way of a private drive. An existing garage with an adjoining outbuilding at the rear is sighted to the north-west of the property, extending up to the boundary shared with the neighbouring property to the west. The proposal involves the demolition of the existing outbuilding and the erection of a part-hipped, part-gabled outbuilding measuring 6.7 metres in depth and 4.5 metres in height. The proposed outbuilding would be finished in timbercladding and feature a red tiled clay roof, which is currently the materials of the existing outbuilding. Just some photographs, this is from the front of the site, this is the existing garage. And then moving to the rear, you'll see the timberclad outbuilding there existing with the clay tile roof. And that's another view of it from the site. So moving to the left of the slide, the matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, having regard to the site's location within the developed area of Hazlemere. Members are being asked to exercise their judgement as to the impact of the proposal on visual amenity, having regard to its modest impact on the public realm, and the impact on residential amenity, noting the single store's scale of the proposal and its distance of one point metres retained from the shared boundary. Officers are also recommending that if permission is granted, a condition would be attached to the approval restricting the use of the outbuilding for purposes incidental to the main dwelling only. There is no update on this item, and the recommendation remains as set out on page ninety one of the agenda, that permission be granted, subject to conditions one to four on pages ninety one and ninety two of the agenda, and informatives one to two on page ninety two of the agenda. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. And members, open up discussion to you. Councillor Rand.
Thank you, Chairman. I drove past this building this afternoon as well, and it's a substantial house with presumably a substantial garden behind it, and I can't see any reason why this should not be done, because I would imagine it would be complimentary to the garden, there would be places in the existing building anyway, and it would get my vote.
Right, members, there are other comments to make. The recommendation is subject to conditions one to four and informatives one to two set out on pages ninety one, ninety two of the agenda, permission be granted. May have those in favour, please show.
Yep, that's unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you very much, members. Permission to grant. Item B2, WA20151921, engineering works for a car parking space and the erection of retaining walls, formation of an access, new pedestrian access and associated works at 76 Cherry Tree Avenue, Hazlemere. Louise, it's all yours.
Thank you, Chairman. The site is located on the western side of Cherry Tree Avenue at the southern end of the cul-de-sac. The site is currently occupied by a detached bungalow. Land levels rise steeply to the west, and the bungalow is located at a significantly higher land level than the road level. The surrounding area is residential in character. This first photograph shows the application property on the right-hand side of the photograph, with the adjacent property at 78 Cherry Tree Avenue on the left. The second photograph shows the end of the cul-de-sac with number 78 Cherry Tree Avenue directly ahead. As you can see to the left of this photo, this property has an existing off-street car parking space. The application site is located here to the right of this photograph. This final photograph is taken from street level, looking up at the application property. The proposed car parking space and the associated engineering operations would be located to the south of the site, with the car parking space adjacent to the boundary with number 78 Cherry Tree Avenue. Ground levels would be excavated to create the car parking space, which would have a depth of 5.8 metres and a width of 2.75 metres. A new path would be installed leading up from Cherry Tree Avenue, which is positioned here, and steps leading up from the edge of the car parking space. Enclosed bin storage would also be located adjacent to the car parking space here. The existing turning head, which exists at the end of the cul-de-sac, would remain as existing, and this is here. Retaining walls would be built due to the significant changes in land levels around the car parking space, the path, the steps and the bin storage, which is proposed to be enclosed here adjacent to the car parking space, which is positioned here. There has been a previously refused scheme on this site, and this differed from the application proposed, as it was for an enclosed garage, which is in a similar position to the currently proposed car parking space. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of the development, the highways issues and parking, the biodiversity, and the effect on the SPAs. The matters for members' judgement this evening are the impact on the visual amenity and the impact on neighbouring amenity. Can I also draw members' attention to the update sheet, which outlines that officers do not have concerns with noise and disturbance, which are unlikely to be significantly increased in relation to the existing arrangement as a result of the proposal. Thank you, Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Louise. Members, Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. I know this site quite well, I've visited it a number of occasions. I can understand that the applicant would like parking on his property, however, we have a letter of objection from number 78 Cherry Tree Avenue, which is quite interesting in terms of why we're granting... We wish to grant approval to this particular application, because at the end of the day, it's virtually the same as what was refused previously, apart from the fact there's no building. If we look at the front of the house, can we have a look at the front elevations, particularly the proposed elevations from the east? That one, yeah. Now, that is rather complicated and completely out of keeping with the rest of the street, really. I think he makes a very strong point that there are no other off-street parking at the rest of Cherry Tree Avenue on that side. Where he's proposing, or where they are proposing to put the parking space, will directly impinge on the amenity of number 78, without doubt. Can I ask, you had a drawing on there, on the length of that parking area, how long is that? I can't really read... If you go back, go back to where you were, there, now there's some measurements on there, I just can't see. What are they? On the right, on the bottom right? Yeah, I can't read that. What does it say?
I'm not sure, this is the refused scheme with the garage. If we go back to the proposed layout, I've got the measurements for that, it's 5.8 metres in depth and 2.75 metres in width.
So it's about seventeen feet. Is that from the... That's from the front edge of the curb? Yes, okay, right. It's a bit tight. I have a problem here, I think what the... Where they've put that particular parking area wouldn't impinge on their amenity whatsoever. Okay? They could have put the parking area at the top end there, okay? And that wouldn't have affected number 78 in any real way. But because they've put it where they've put it, and they've designed this fantastic sort of walkways and retaining walls and all sorts of odd things, it doesn't affect them at all, it only affects number 78. And I think it's out of keeping with the whole street scene, to be honest with you. Can we have a look at the block plan with the turning circle? Keep going. There, there's free parking from the edge of the purple, which is their land, okay, the top, all the way along that road, and there's plenty of space. There is ample space to park, there's no problem parking at all, none at all. I've been there numerous occasions, and it's... There's one or two cars are parked along it, because the only people that park there are the bungalows, mainly bungalows on the left-hand side as you go up the road. And, you know, it's a serious effect on the amenity of number 78, and I can't agree with the officers. They seem to have ignored all the comments they made on their previous application, and I think it's unacceptable. I'm sorry, I can't agree with the officers on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Edwards. Councillor Rand.
Thank you. I'm sorry to have to slightly disagree with my esteemed colleague, Councillor Edwards, because I don't think it impinges very much on number 78. There's a very high wooden fence there at the moment, and this being a parking area as opposed to a garage, would probably impinge less than the existing fence. What looks rather unattractive in the earlier diagram is the amount of boarding put up all over the front, all around the reversing part, which probably isn't necessary, you know, that picture there. It's a very, I think, misleading impression, because I'm not sure if that top part, that drawing, is the building or more terraces to reach the building. I'm referring to the bottom right-hand quarter of that drawing, where all that boarding has nothing to do with the parking space, and we could make comments about that. I also wonder if, can I ask the officers if they... I wouldn't be surprised if they don't know the answer to this. As Councillor Edwards mentioned, it certainly would impinge less on number 78 if the parking area was put to the north of that purple patch, but I don't think there's room. I don't think it would fit, would it?
Louise?
Obviously, this isn't part of this application, and we would need to assess any application for future car parking elsewhere on its merits. However, I would like to draw your attention to the turning area, which is obviously to the north part, where current users of the road come down and turn in that area to then go back up.
Yes, so am I allowed to continue?
Please.
I presume the turning area is sacrosanct, it's public property and it has to be provided there for vehicles to turn, so they wouldn't be expected to encroach upon that. So I personally don't think there's room. There's only just room for the footpath, the pedestrian access that they do propose in this application. So frankly, apart from passing comments such as the right-hand part, as you look at it, is pretty ugly with all that perhaps unnecessary boarding, the bin store is not the most attractive. Sorry, I'm about to eat the microphone. But the actual parking space that they're applying to do, I think is okay. Finished.
Just going to say that the turning head there, if you don't use that, you've got a long back, long reversing road down there, I can assure you. Councillor Muller.
Thank you, Chairman. I must find this quite difficult to visualise, and I'm inclined to think that a site visit might be quite a good idea, together with CGI of how it would look, because I agree that the amount of fencing that appears to be proposed looks very strange, and if that's part and parcel of the application, I would not be keen to support it. But I'm aware that may be misleading, and I'd actually quite like to see the site for myself and have to explain exactly how the new parking arrangements differ from what is currently available. So really, I feel that having listened to my two colleagues, I don't yet have quite enough information to be able to make up my mind. I mean, that, the bottom photograph presumably is of the application.
Yes.
Yeah. And what I'd like to know is how that will change. It's not an unpleasant view, but if it's going to, because in fact the railing is basically just rail, so you don't lose any of the greenery behind it, in summer anyway. And I just can't help wondering what it's going to look like when it's finished, and the trouble is, if we get it wrong, it's all done and you can't go back again. So I think, well, I would certainly, I don't know whether colleagues agree, I'd like to defer this for a site visit, and I would ask that the applicant provide some sort of rather better finished product picture, so we can get an idea of what he has in mind. But as things stand, that amount of fencing rather puts me off. But I'm happy to propose that we defer for a site visit.
Councillor King.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And I recall the last application for the garage on this one, and to be frank, I can see absolutely no difference whatsoever. It's just a space without a roof on compared to the plan we had before. And the engineering works, as councillor Muller has said, concern me greatly. I appreciate it is a very steep site, and they all are along there. It's a nightmare going, delivering, you're exhausted. It's very steep, and I do have concerns about the proposed engineering works for access. Thank you.
Fine, thank you. We have a proposal to defer. Do you have a second, Councillor Muller? Councillor Edwards?
I second. I second councillor Muller's proposal.
Fine, we have a proposal for a site visit to... Before the next meeting of this committee... Before the next meeting of this committee, can I have a show of hands, those in favour of a site visit, please?
That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Fine, thank you very much indeed. We will defer for a site visit and take it no further now. Councillor Edwards.
Just to put my mind at rest, has a suggestion that's been made to have a CGI prepared be taken forward, please.
Chairman, I would answer that. If we take it that members have resolved to defer and to request officers to request that information from the applicants, that would be your formal resolution. Whether they provide it or not is obviously up to them. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you all. That completes the meeting. Thank you all very much indeed, members.